As simple as we can today, just to make sure everything works. We don't have any serious motions. Normally I was gonna try and do a recorded vote for all the motions. And if you wanted to speak to it, I would ask you to tell me in advance. Now, today we're only doing, um, very simple things, like confirmation of agenda consent agenda. If, uh, somebody wants to speak to it, we will. And then, once we do that, we're gonna have the staff reports. And I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept those at the end. And anybody who has questions at the end of the staff reports could then, uh, ask their question. So, I will call this meeting to order. And, uh, first, we'll have a moment of reflection. Means we have lots to reflect on here just this last month. Okay, does anybody have a disclosure of community, pecuniary interest at this point in time? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to accept the agenda. And I will need you to state your name when you make the motion.
This is Rhonda, I'd like to add, uh, an item under new business.
Okay. And that is?
And then I'll move the mo- move the agenda.
Okay, what item do you want to add under new business?
I want to talk about, uh, the bylaws.
Okay. And you're moving the agenda?
Yes.
I will second it as amended. Bob Wilhelm.
Thank you. Does anybody, is anybody against that motion? Hearing none, that is confirmed. Now, we have the consent agenda. Uh, five point one, five point two. Uh, could I have a motion to put that on the floor? Uh, Hugh McFerrick. Thank you. Seconder?
Matt Duncan.
That you, thank you, Matt. Uh, any comments or com- questions about, uh, any of the two items on that? Anyone against that motion? Carried. Now, we're gonna go to public meetings, hearings, delegations, there aren't any. Council reports. Um, what we're going to do here is, we're gonna have staff updates. And I am actually just slightly changing the order because of an appointment a little later on. We're going with economic development first. Meredith, you're on the line.
Thank you, Warden, good morning, County Council. Um, I do have to step away at ten AM. So, I wonder, Warden, if anyone has any questions for what economic development and tourism is working on? If we could ask those questions at the end of my, uh, quick update, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Thank you, okay. So, um, economic development and tourism has done a pivot in our recent plan in response to COVID-19 situation. We launched a business impact survey, uh, on the, uh, at the beginning of March, or mid-March. We had over two hundred and fifty-eight responses. This survey, um, usually asks simple questions, puts businesses five to six minutes to complete. And we're just currently collecting that data. So, with preliminary results coming in, we were able to do a pivot on our program. And we do a few things quickly, just to get up and running, to help our businesses, uh, be successful. So, we developed a training webinar series. So, last night was our first session. And it's helping businesses get their businesses online. So, if they want some business order, how they can do online sales. So, yesterday afternoon, from two to three, we had thirty-four, uh, businesses participate. And then, from seven to eight PM last night, we had twelve. The next one is on April third, again, in the afternoon, the movement session. And then, on April seventh and tenth. The county council should have received an email with that information. We also launched our welcoming communities training. This is a continuation on from our, um, twenty-nineteen rural economic development and commerce funding program. We hadn't had a chance to launch it yet, because we're still working with the details and the logistics with, um, Danshaw College. But we were able to launch it on Monday, and we've had businesses signing up. So, please encourage, again, we sent that email to you. Please encourage your businesses to sign up, this is a great resource. We do only have a limited, uh, number of licenses. They do have to contact us in the economic development office to get their business signed up. Um, we also created a training resource page on our website. So, this is all the opportu- all the free opportunities for businesses to take training across the province. We've teamed up with Mentor Works. Uh, they're hosting online rural, uh, regional government funding webinars. Pretty daunting right now, every day, um, the situation is chang- changing. The province and the federal government are offering new opportunities for, uh, funding and resource help. So, Mentor Works is taking businesses through it step by step, and how to successfully secure really proper, um, uh, resources that they need for their businesses. So, again, that's all on our website, uh, PerthCounty.ca/training. We did a pivot in response to our, um, surveys and our, uh, uh, marketing programs for tourism and economic development to help businesses. And we've done nineteen days and nineteen ways to support local businesses while encouraging social distancing. This program, um, is, uh, nineteen different ways to support your local businesses, not fail practicing social distancing. So, we've had an overwhelming response in the community. We've actually had an overwhelming response from many of the counties across the province that are asking us to duplicate a program, which we are absolutely no problem with. So, really encouraging different ways to support local businesses through, um, online engagement, whether it's shopping, uh, shopping online or ordering food. But, uh, some businesses that are having, uh, porch delivery or crude side pickup, uh, doing online classes with your gym, et cetera. We also are doing a spotlight on business and meet the owners, reminding our residents that, you know, these are the folks that we go to when we ask for sponsorship. Uh, when our kids' sports teams are looking for new jerseys, but there are neighbors and that, our people in our community that need, need help right now. So, really encouraging all of our, uh, residents to support our local businesses. We've been doing, uh, routine social media shareouts and following and encouraging, um, residents and businesses to follow the Huron Perth Health Unit. We've been doing thank you to our first responders. Uh, we've been thanking the businesses who have been, uh, donating PPEs to our first responders. We get, we launched a joint press release with the hospital, Jaffa Police Fire and the paramedics looking for our PPE either donation or from, uh, suppliers who currently have stock. The stock is low. Um, and then, just general staff communication updates. We've been busy working on making sure that, uh, community residents are informed of what's happening as, um, as, as up to date and as current as it can be. So, that was my quick update. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Meredith. Uh, questions from councillors?
Bob Wilhelm, what was the, uh, uh, the address to, uh, give to the businesses for assistance Perth County website there?
So, there, so it's just PerthCounty.ca. And if you click going under, um, uh, doing business, there's actually a COVID, COVID-19 relief, uh, resource page right there. And there's also a Perth County, uh, under a PerthCounty.ca doing business, there's also a training link as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? None here, any? Thanks, Meredith. Uh, we will move on to public.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, I'm not. John McFarland here, thank you, Warden Herson, good morning, council. Uh, just a quick update here from Public Works, um, with our roads and fleet division, divisions there. Our winter shifts have ended officially on March twenty-ninth. And we no longer have our seasonal staff or winter maintenance contractor, the Murray Group, in place. Uh, typically, this time of year, we deal with some winter events outside the defined winter season. And just so you know, we have a protocol in place to deal with that. Uh, we've been very fortunate through the we- weather has cooperated so far, and we haven't had to respond to date. Uh, normally, our full-time staff would now all be meeting at our Mitchell yard to begin spring maintenance activities. And due to this pandemic and the need to distance our employees, we've spread our staff out over our three yards at Milverton, Mitchell, and Stratford. Equipment and vehicles have also been spread out so that, basically, one employee will be operating the same vehicle or a piece of equipment on a daily basis. Uh, we're also very conscious about sanitizing this equipment after its usage. Uh, we continue to do typical spring maintenance activities such as pothole patching, uh, sign repairs, uh, intersection sweeping, uh, bit of tree maintenance, gravel shoulder maintenance, and road patrolling. Uh, however, we are limiting the number of crew members, um, using separate vehicles and being mindful of our distancing when performing, performing these maintenance activities. Uh, this certainly does impact some of the activities that we normally do, that being tree maintenance, where we typically have a much larger crew. We've also split up our mechanics, one's working out of the Mitchell yard and one out of Stratford. And why we've done splitting up of staff is just in response to a number of health and safety concerns from our staff, and certainly for the continuity of our services. Uh, should one of our staff possibly test positive, we can better isolate those staff, the equipment in the yard, and take appropriate action and maintain our services from our other locations. However, to date, all our sto- all our staff are healthy and have been reporting in for work. On the admin side of things, Cal and Chuck and myself have been busy preparing tender documents and specifications for road projects. We currently have a cold-in-place recycling tender and a hot-mix asphalt tender out for the project for Perth Road one-twelve, one-thirteen, Perth East Line twenty-nine, and Perth South Line twenty. The recycling tender closes on April seventh and the hot-mix tender on April twentieth. We, at this time, we plan to have tender results reported to council for the May seventh meeting. As well, Wellington County has the tender out for the Perth Line eighty-six road construction. And that tender does include the bridge rehab that was identified in our, uh, bridge capital, uh, budget. Um, that tender closes on April fourteenth. With our capital road work, I do have a, a few concerns this year, given the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, these concerns are mainly about increased project costs, scheduling, and the contractors' ability to complete work this year. Uh, on that note, I will be participating in a webinar this afternoon on municipal road construction projects during the COVID crisis. And this is being put on by the Ontario Good Roads Association. Uh, Calina has been working on booking fuel for twenty-twenty. And what we're trying to do here is take advantage of the low fuel price. Uh, she has completed some of this work, but remaining is our bulk supply of, uh, clear diesel and colored diesel. And, uh, typically, those costs annually are, are, uh, about over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, for doing this, we're basically hedging our bets, if you will, that the price of fuel will go up, uh, later this year. Uh, so, we are working with Corey in the finance, uh, division on this. Uh, however, just so councils are aware, timing might be critical here in order to, uh, secure some of the, this, these prices. Uh, other admin work includes our normal daily routines of payroll, procurement, invoicing, and permit investigations and, and approvals. Our winter modernization project, we have signed a contract with STEMA. And I will be leading this meeting shortly to participate in a kickoff teleconference with the consultant and my fellow PW counterparts. Timelines on this project are very tight. And I know Lori has reached out to the minister to find out if there would be an extension on this, uh, final report because of the pandemic. Uh, to date, Minister Clark has indicated that there is going to be no extension at this time. Also, in speaking with the warden and deputy warden last week, we have decided to cancel the annual road tour, uh, at this time. And the last thing with roads and fleet, we are also working on recruitment, uh, with HR for, uh, asset manager and engineering specialist and our summer students. Uh, any questions before I move on to facilities?
Bob Wilhelm, I, uh, you said you have one tech working in each Stratford and Mitchell. Uh, do you have someone else working with them to meet your WSIB requirements?
Sorry, Bob, could you repeat that?
Yes, you said you have one tech working in Mitchell and one in Stratford. Do you have, uh, someone working with them to meet your WSIB requirements?
Uh, yes, uh, at those, at those yards, we would have, uh, um, about three individuals in each yard.
Okay, thank you.
John, it's Doug Wright here.
Yes, Doug?
Uh, what's the ETA on our signs, our nine-one signs? Because we got a perfect opportunity to isolate and get them all done. Are they coming, or are they months away yet?
Uh, yes, thank you, councillor. I, um, I did, uh, have been reaching out to the company in DC who is producing these signs. Uh, unfortunately, because of this COVID thing, a number of the materials were coming from China. Um, and of course, they were facing some delays in, in it, in getting some of the raw materials for this work. So, there is some delays with this particular project. Um, last, uh, this was last updated on Friday. Uh, we are probably about a month away from receiving our first order of signs. And so, I've been keeping our Public Works, uh, people up to date on, on the status of this project, because I do know that they, you know, obviously, installation is important for this as well. So, um, they are, the sign company in DC is still open and at full production. And they, uh, uh, to date, uh, they haven't, uh, had any impacts because of the COVID-19. I, I can tell you, though, that some of our, uh, sign manufacturers that we typically deal with here in Ontario, I know one of them in particular is closed down at the moment because of the pandemic. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks very much, John. John, this is, uh, Doug Kellam. Did you previously mention that someone may have contacted this virus?
Uh, councillor Kellam, no, um, uh, no, I, I, I'm just saying that if should one of our staff, uh, um, test positive, just, we've split up our staff so that we could better isolate that, uh, and, and still perform our operations from our other yards.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, e- everyone is healthy at this time.
Perfect.
If there's no more questions, I'll just move on to facilities. Um, Nick and Calina have sent out the tender for the roof replacement project at Five Huron, which is the Service Ontario building. That tender closes on April fourteenth. Um, typically, we would have a pre-tender meeting, like a site meeting, with contractors that are looking to bid on the project. Uh, however, due to the pandemic, we've had to hold those meetings separate. And to date, Nick has met with nine, uh, contractors. Uh, with the courthouse being close to the public and no POA or Superior Court, this is obviously a good opportunity to get some of the projects that were approved in the budget completed. We have already completed the conversion to LED lighting in the Superior courtroom. Uh, that was about five thousand dollars. We had budgeted thirty-one thousand for a new AC controller on the third level, and also the replacement of three ductless split AC units at the courthouse. Um, so, budgeted thirty-one thousand quotes for that work are under budget at twenty-six thousand. And that work is expected to be completed in the next two to three weeks. Immediately after that work is complete, we would plan to proceed with adding more insulation in the attic area of the courthouse. Uh, councillor calls, we had budgeted around thirty thousand for that insulation work, but we do have a quote at ten thousand dollars. Uh, we plan to move ahead with other capital facility projects as approved in the budget, and certainly enhancements at the courthouse in relation to security, central administration, and the elevator. Uh, however, some of this work will depend on the availability of contractors. One project we will be putting on hold, uh, is the Milverton septic replacement. Uh, we're just gonna do a Band-Aid solution for now, uh, since we, there is a potential for a better permanent fix in the, in the next year or two. Our facility staff continue to perform our essential inspections and maintenance, maintenance activities at our facilities. However, uh, whenever possible, we're trying to keep access, uh, and even ourselves, uh, in our facilities to a minimum. Service Ontario, our tenant at Five Huron is still open for business. Uh, however, that, uh, Nick has told me that that business is down slightly, but not on the traffic in and out. But, uh, they do, they are still open, and there are still a number of people coming in there. Um, what we've done there is, uh, been providing extra cleaning during regular business hours. Uh, this is through our contracted janitorial service, and they are sanitizing sort of common areas and, uh, uh, the heavy touch points within the facility. That extra cost will be paid by Service Ontario. Nick's also developed a COVID-19 screening document for our contractors that are en- entering our facilities to do any repair or service work. Um, and staff are also made aware of their presence within that facility. A- as well, we have, uh, cut off access to the third level of the courthouse, since there's no council, POA court, or Superior court. Anyone that doesn't need access to that level, uh, is going through facilities at this time. Uh, that concludes my, uh, update at this point in time. And if anybody has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for John? Hearing none, thanks, John. Uh, if you have to leave, you got another conference call coming up, there you go.
Thank you.
Uh, next, is Mac or Donald on the line?
We're both here.
Yes, we both are. Uh, yeah. We're gonna do your report next, then, if you guys can carry on and do other things.
Thank you. All right, uh, thank you. It's, uh, Donald here. I will, uh, I'll give you guys an update on the operations side of, uh, the, uh, the service and, and what we're doing and kind of where we're going. Um, our, our team has been, uh, extremely busy over the last two weeks, uh, both on leadership side of, uh, uh, the operation as well as the frontline paramedic side. Um, everyone's been doing an amazing job, uh, working together very well. And, uh, I know we're, we've got ourselves in a, in a bit of a, a good comfort operation zone right now. Uh, we do have a plan in play, uh, with regards to how we respond to any suspected COVID calls, how we're caring and treating for these patients, uh, how we're handing over care at hospital and facilities. And then, um, how we're deconning our, our, our equipment and, and vehicles and getting them back to the service. The plan also includes how we're running day-to-day operations as well. Um, you know, um, we need to ensure that we're continuing, you know, continuity of, of operations at all levels and for all situations. So, um, the team has, uh, done a great job of coming and bringing that together. I can respect the report that, uh, our volume is down at this time. Um, that's just, uh, that tells me a couple of things. One, uh, people aren't, uh, calling paramedic services or utilizing acute care for unnecessary reasons, or for reasons that can be dealt with, with, uh, their family physician or other healthcare team, uh, resources that they have as part of their surgical care. So, we do, you know, really commend, uh, the public for, um, exercising other healthcare resources besides calling nine-one-one and, uh, you know, hearing, which is a department. But, um, at the end of the day, if there's anyone who is concerned or unsure of how to deal with their healthcare needs, um, we're always there to respond, and we will always respond. Uh, personal productive equipment is a very huge, critical piece in this pandemic. Um, I'm sure you can see and hear a lot in media about, uh, this. Um, we are in a good zone right now with regards to our current inventory and our projections of usage over the next, uh, three to four weeks. Um, that being said, we are monitoring our inventory daily, um, and, and keeping a very close eye on that. Um, so, we, our team has, has been doing a great job of, of doing that, as well as, uh, forecasting, uh, future usage as we walk through this pandemic. We are working very closely with a lot of our vendors, um, and a lot of, uh, non-traditional vendors. We've had a lot of great support from, um, local businesses to provide some donations and examples. Uh, the local distillers, uh, providing us with hand sanitizer, it's been a great help, and we're very grateful for that, uh, generosity. Um, our team's also working very closely with our medative counterparts across the country. Um, we, we have a team that is a task force behind acquiring PPE, as well as other task forces that look at safety, look at, uh, the human resource components, to, to walking through all this together. And, uh, you know, we're, we're getting tapped into a vast knowledge of resources and expertise, uh, across the country. Um, partnerships have been a huge component, uh, to this, um, both internally and externally. Uh, internally, working very closely with Marion and her team in HR. Um, you know, there's a lot of hatred questions in there that we have to walk through in all of this. Uh, and, uh, she's been a great, a great resource so far, and, uh, we're, we're working together quite well. Um, finance, uh, we're just trying to figure out, you know, getting things set up properly that, um, you know, when it's time to, uh, tabulate all these costs that are associated with, uh, dealing with this pandemic, then we've got the, the right data and the right information, uh, in order. So, uh, Corey's been, uh, working in the background as well, uh, supporting, uh, those initiatives. Uh, and then, outside, public health, hospitals, uh, Ontario Health, um, has, has been our key, our key players in all of this, uh, as well as, and as I mentioned, you know, the, the medative health services team as well, uh, throughout all of this, um, pandemic and the support that everyone's providing us and the support we're providing them. Um, and, uh, we were starting a recruitment for, uh, onboarding some new primary care paramedics, uh, on a part-time basis, casual basis, uh, prior to this pandemic taking a life on its own. So, we did continue through with that process. Um, the team has been working very hard on, on modifying our intake process to, to ensure that we're respecting social distancing, physical distancing. And, uh, uh, obviously, we've turned, uh, in-person meetings to virtual, uh, interview-type stuff. So, uh, we'll hopefully be onboarding some new staff in the very near future, uh, which will help our overall operations, but it will also help us have a, uh, very good, uh, capacity when it comes to any predictive pandemic plans we have to enact, um, based on, you know, staff being sick, staff being, you know, exposed, all those sort of things. So, um, it, it's helping our overall plan. That is all I have from operations. I don't want to bore you on the nitty-gritty stuff, um, you know, but, um, I do want to commend my team, um, for all the hard work that they put in day and, day and night over the last two weeks. And, uh, everyone's been doing an amazing job, and I'm proud of them.
Thanks, Donald. Do you have anything to add, Matt?
Yes, I do, uh, just a, a small, a small item that, uh, that I'd like to present. Uh, first of all, good morning, Mr. Warden and, and county councillors, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. The purpose of my presentation is to bring you the status of the purchase of the three new ambulances that Perth County will be ordering and receiving in twenty-twenty. You will recall the capital budget that was approved last February included five hundred thousand for, for three new ambulances and a, a hundred and forty-eight thousand for stretchers for, uh, basically, a combined amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand. I recognize this purchase does not formally have to be brought to you. However, I'm kind of new in the game with county council, and, and I thought of other respect that I present, uh, you, the actions that I've been taking, uh, towards this purchase. Uh, I won't bore you with the number of, of, uh, ambulance manufacturers in Canada, there's only four. And, uh, we've always dealt recently with Crestline Coach. Uh, so, in an effort to get an approved price, uh, for the fi- for five ambulances, uh, basically, two were ordered in Elgin County, and as well as three for Perth. So, we basically put, uh, the two deputy chiefs together in an effort to, to see if we can get a, a common vehicle package plus a, a better price. This, as you remember, was brought forward by Vice President Matt Crossman in the presentation review in January. So with that marching orders from Matt, we were able to come up to a common vehicle configuration and only one minor exception in the Perth vehicle was a tenet seat that the crews liked very much, so we stuck with that. We also included in this purchase to include the Stryker power load stretcher and the power load lift system rather than outsource the units after the ambulance is delivered. You may recall this was done in the last vehicle we received back in January. Basically, the price for each ambulance, including all power load equipment and stretcher, is approximately $199,950, excluding HST in the case of Perth, not the exterior strike package. Total budget, total cost under budget for this purchase therefore is about $30,000. And we anticipate the power load and power lift systems that are provided by Stryker will have a life cycle of about 10 years. So going forward, we'll be using these two units in future ambulance purchases. Combined cost of these units is about $50,000 of the $199,000 purchase. Delivery date is in December of '20. The downward pressure on the Canadian dollar is the reason I am presenting this to council this morning. As a result of the efforts to work together, a savings of approximately $10,000 to the county has been realized. For the record, these savings will not be subject to any sharing as outlined in the medevac management agreement. I want you to know I've worked very closely with John McCollum and Corey Bridges on this project to ensure the county policies have been followed on the purchase, and I thank each one of them for their help and support. Finally, also a final thank you to Marion as well, who's been very helpful for Donald and I going forward with the many HR issues that have been raised during the COVID-19 pandemic. I appreciate the opportunity to present this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Does any, actually, I'll ask if any councillors have questions of EMS at this point in time so that they can carry on to their operations? Not hearing any. Thanks, Donald. Thanks, Mac. And should we also mention at this time that apparently Bruce Power is going to make a donation of some protective equipment for his staff? Are you aware of that, Mac? Donald?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden, and I was waiting for you to make the president move the announcement, so thank you. As I understand it, those items will be delivered to our headquarters very shortly, and it's something that we're very grateful for.
Thanks, Mac. Okay.
Thank you.
We're getting him on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
POA Services, Linda.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, councillor. Provincial offences office is working with reduced staff in the office to allow for physical distancing. We're closed to walk in traffic, but we continue to take payments by phone, receive payments by mail, answer questions on the phone and by email. Staff are preparing to reschedule two dockets for April 7th and April 9th. They're waiting for an update that I will provide to them after my teleconference with the provincial ministries tomorrow. Our courts have been closed up to and including May 29th. This means that there can be no convictions registered. So we continue to prepare dockets for, the timelines have run out, but we are not permitted to take those to adjust the peace. And while we continue to receive applications, only urgent matters can be taken to adjust the peace over at the Criminal Court at 100 St. Patrick's. We've had one urgent matter for reopening that was taken over and struck out. There is an order in place to halt any new enforcement of defaulted fines, and there's also an order in place that extends deadlines for filing of charges. However, staff being in the office, we can continue to receive some charges for keen filing and upload. Here's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone have any questions for Linda? Hearing none. We're going to move on to Archives. Betty Jo.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, everyone. It's Betty Jo Belton. Just to recap, her discussions with the CAO and the Warden, Stratford-Perth Archives canceled or indefinitely postponed all public events as of March 15th and closed in-person researchers as of March 16th. Staff are now working from home for the most part. However, we are taking turns being in the building during business hours. We're answering phone calls and responding to email requests as usual, and requests for information and photo scans do continue to come in. The on-duty staff person also does our usual twice-daily inspection of the collections room, so they're on the lookout for signs of leaks or pests or anything else that could damage the cultural property stored in there. I get a morning status report email from one of the staff on site and a phone call in the afternoon to discuss work at home projects. Otherwise, staff are continuing with projects from the 2020 work plan from home, and that includes writing articles for local newspapers every week, updating the Archives disaster response plan, and creating an overall preservation policy as a companion piece. Projects that had been identified already for quiet times on the reference desk are what they are working on for the most part, and that's things like creating indexes and updating finding aids. So our priorities remain providing good stewardship of the Archives collections and providing access to information for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty Jo. Do I have any questions for Betty Jo? Hearing none. Moving on to Finance. Corey.
Thank you, Warden and councillors. The update for Finance is essentially, operations is still as normal. We are still working on the 2019 year-end. What was indicated from BDO, our auditors, is that they are all working from home. So we still don't know what the impact of them to actually do the year-end audit will be, but usually timing for that audit is done at the end of April, beginning of May. So we'll be looking at to see how we can still, because we still need onsite auditor to do some transactional testing. Other than that, there is still no really impact to the Finance division overall. We are looking at cash flow impacts in relation to deferral of tax, taxation revenue, and currently there's really no impact to Q1 as most of this had occurred in March and most of profit taxes were taken in over the first quarter. We will be doing a reevaluation at the end of Q2. As has been mentioned, that we are assisting all divisions with respect to any questions that they have, as indicated from working with paramedics as well as a lot of questions from human resources as well. As mentioned in the 2020 economic and fiscal update, properties assessments have been postponed for 2021. They'll be based on 2020 values, which were based on the 2016 full values. So the impact of that is still being evaluated. And for tax policy report will be coming April 16th to set tax policies for 2020. And just to mention, I've been monitoring provincial announcements. There is $80 million related to ambulance and paramedic services, and for different causes of COVID. That is all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Corey? Hearing none. We move on to Steve. IT.
Thank you, Warden and council. IT staff have been setting up the teleconferencing services for staff and then offering those out to the member municipalities and to the city of city. We've been getting learner laptops set up and tested for staff that want to use those and choose to work from home. We're currently reviewing and testing options for remote meeting services and discussing those with the member municipalities. Main priority for us has been developing the setup to enable us to stream this meeting online today. Our GIS staff, it's pretty much business as usual, working with land division and member municipal planners, putting together report folders and information, as well as working with county planning staff on the GIS requirements for the official plan project. That concludes my update.
Questions for Steve?
Hey, it's Doug. I'm here again. Is there any chance that we're going to actually get up to date and do it as a visual to see who's actually there and what's going on, like Zoom, like we're going to use at West Perth or FaceTime? Like, I have a ball meeting. I can do FaceTime with 20 people, and here we are. We don't know exactly who's there, what they're doing. Are we going to visual? My question.
Yeah, the county itself has a GoToMeeting account, so we're going to be looking at that. We were also able to discuss with the GoToMeeting company about getting some free accounts, so I've been talking to the others about extending those out. Zoom is another option, but the county already had a GoToMeeting account, so that's the next step. This is the first phase. So absolutely, the next phase is for us to use the GoToMeeting to do visual, screen sharing, sort of posting the agenda so everybody can sort of walk through it. So that's the next phase of this project for us.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Sally, you're up. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning. I wanted to let everyone know that we're still receiving applications, and we're receiving those by mail. And the main change on the application side is that people need to have their applications commissioned by a commissioner of votes before they mail them. So that is a slight change in our service. We would normally have done that for them in person. And we've been providing information to people about how to, how to get a commissioner of votes and what is accepted. And we got that information from the Law Society. So it's still very possible for people to submit applications to us. And we have been receiving, like, we have received, I think, five, five in the last week and a couple amendments to existing projects via email. So we're continuing to process the applications right up to the stage of a public meeting. And I think David is also working ahead a little bit on drafting reports, like filling out most of the information that would happen after a public meeting so that when we do have that opportunity, we'll be able to turn over the reports both before, leading up to a public meeting and after a public meeting relatively quickly. We're doing that in preparation for, we just want to make sure that we're able to handle, like, any backlog that might occur depending on how long, how long we are limited in our public meeting abilities. But I think we're likely to hear something from the province relatively soon. And I do have a, I do have a call later today with our rep at MMAH to get some updates. But we're sort of preparing in the background to build something on top of the platform that we're using right now. So whatever the pieces that Steve's putting in place now for council and with the GoTo opportunities, then we're going to build on that and have a backup plan essentially for public meetings. The real question is whether or not those are going to satisfy or be an adequate substitute because the nature of a public meeting is that people come and that they are, they have the option of participating in a, in a visual and an audible way. So I think, I think we'll find that the province gets us there or allows us to do that electronically. But there's not a confirmation yet about that. And I, I would really hope, and my preference is that there's a standard method across the province. And right now, everyone is doing the same thing as us, essentially preparing for, preparing to do this electronically when we're given that green light. So in this particular aspect, I've chosen to be the sort of patient but not passive route because I think, I think it's all going to work out and we'll be able to carry on with applications that are in the queue already in the near future. So some of the other things, there's an active chat of planning managers and directors, and I participate in that. And that's been really helpful to overcome questions and come up with solutions that, that are going to be a little more consistent across the province. So right now, we're, we're having conversations about appeal periods and how that will be impacted by the province's, the province's suspension of statutory timeline. So we can't, with definition, give somebody the end of an appeal period at the moment. In addition, we've hired a summer student, so we did go, we carried on and did our interviews over the phone, and we have a very impressive young woman starting with us on May 4th. Her name is Brittany Manley. And she's very capable and willing to work remotely if necessary. So when the time comes for her to begin, we're preparing to start that through telephone and email if necessary. And the main reason that I wanted to continue with the summer student is that both Gary in GIS and myself, we need, we need her support through the next four or five months to continue to give a lot of life to the official plan project. And she's very keen, and she has a great background to help us with this in both the subject matter and in public engagement and social media applications. And I think it's going to be a real benefit to have her on, on staff with us. So I think that we're still very much working on the official plan every day. Gary is working pretty diligently on mapping, and we're doing a lot of cleanup on the data and then preparing tools so that when we sit down or when we're able to have meetings, either electronically or otherwise, with planning staff throughout the county, that we'll be able to have really productive, efficient decision-making on things like settlement boundaries. So all that homework continues, and we're really aiming to coincide the timing of those decision-making processes on the mapping with the consultant's delivery of the text document. So I continue to have meetings with the consultant every other week, and we talk through connecting details between the mapping and the policy. And also, they're informing me that they are well, well into it, and we might actually have a document to look at within a month. So that's very exciting. And with that comes the need to prepare for meaningful committee meetings. So there's the steering committee, the technical committee, and the stakeholder committee, and to be able to have a real opportunity for those folks to dig into the material, see how it works and how it would feel and look on the ground. So trying to plan for those kinds of meetings as well. The planning committee meeting, planning committee, planning review committee, sorry, the work there will continue, and now I'll be able to participate, and so I'm preparing reports for that group as well. The final thing I wanted to talk to you about, or actually second last, was you had directed me to initiate an official plan amendment for the changes in the text of surplus ground dwellings. And I have, I have not initiated that, and there's two reasons for that. And one of them is that without being able to schedule a public meeting for this and give therefore adequate notice about when that public meeting would take place, I think it's premature to be able to respond to the, to the public and to bring this information out. I have received inquiries already about, about it because it was brought up and we talked about it in previous council meetings. So I think there's going to be a lot of public interest in this, and frankly, right now, we don't, we don't have the manpower to deal with a lot of inquiry on this and keep the official plan moving. So I think my, well, my solution- So I think my, well, my solution for that, I don't think I know, is to backfill Hannah's position with some temporary support. And then I'm hoping that coincides very nicely with a public meeting ability, and then I can get this one moving again. So it's not, it's not stalled, it's just on pause until I feel more confident that we can address, address all the concerns from the public really well and be able to give them some, some concrete information about public meeting opportunities. So the final thing then to leave you with is that the next report you'll receive from me for the 16th meeting is gonna be about our comprehensive review, which we received and I sent to all of you. And also, if you'll recall way back, we also have a policy directions report that was done by our consultant, W.S.P. And those are two background pieces that support the official plan work, and they both need formal approval from council. So I'll be bringing you reports on both of those things for the 16th. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Any questions for Sally from Counselors? Hearing none. H.R., Marion, you're up.
Perfect, thank you, Warden. So I believe my report was sent out separately, as it does involve more staffing matters that would be confidential. But just to highlight, we do do weekly communications to staff, so we will be doing our communication today. Just general updates, what's going on to keep people connected and informed. So we'll be doing one after council today, just to discuss what happened on the call, since really nothing over and above has changed since last week. H.R.'s busy taking a lot of calls and questions by email and phone, working really closely with W.S.I.B. to help some, push through some of the claims from paramedic services with regards to any type of exposure or potential there, and also working with the Ministry of Labor and the federal government with regards to the benefits. I've also been on the phone with Omer's, trying to get a better understanding of different options for, for staff if they are, if they are on leave and that type of thing. Other than that, working now, doing interviewing with Perth South, and then as well, completing interviews and making offers to candidates for internal county positions as well. So both in paramedic services, we're gonna start interviews with public courts for the asset management specialists. The H.R. Generalist interviews have concluded, and the Manager of Legislative Services has also ended as well. Just wanted to show thanks for everyone being a little bit patient as I learned some of the systems. Obviously, that was a bit of a new process, but I think we're getting there fairly quickly. And if anyone has any questions on the report that I sent, feel free to either take it offline if it's, you know, more specific in nature, or otherwise, I can take general questions.
Okay, actually, Marion, that report didn't quite get sent out. It is gonna be sent out after the meeting, but...
It's just for information, and if there are any questions, certainly talk to me.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions after that comes out, then don't hesitate to email Marion back. Is that fine, Marion?
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
Okay. No questions for Marion? Laurie?
Okay, so thank you to Counsel for your patience during the last couple weeks. It certainly is a learning opportunity, that's for sure. In terms of updates, I know the C.E.M.C. would have been here today, but he was meeting with the Town of St. Mary's this morning in one of their meetings. So for C.E.M.C., you would have seen him assisting with the C.A.O.s and alternates across our system, which now includes St. Mary's for this period of time. And he participates in the meetings both on an individual level as well as our weekly combined meetings. And so a lot of work being done there, a lot of work being done looking at development of community while-being plans with the staff at each local, and where we can send residents, working with social services for the list of responses to give to the public when they're calling our offices, and certainly, we're getting them hear those calls at the county office as well. Working on some volunteer plans, assisting with information to distribute to the Mennonite community, and then eventual recovery plans to try and get us all back to normal when that time comes. And there is contact with neighboring municipalities, and obviously, the Provincial Office of P.I.A.C., the Provincial Emergency Operations Center is a daily contact. And there's been work done with the MAFRA and the Humane Society, given some animal concerns that may arise if we have a large influx of the virus in our rural community where animal care may become an issue if a lot of our residents who perform those duties fall sick. Working with social services and volunteers in order for us to be able to access volunteers if that comes to fruition there. And obviously, updating to the P.I.A.C. portal on a week, on a daily basis. In terms of our work in courts and C.A.O., we still are continuing on managing any sort of reception calls, mail, phone, web inquiry, so that goes on. Program support for the emergency management, forestry applications are still continuing. We're updating our special, our S.O.P.s for those programs, and we're looking at future reports for that program, and FIPPA inquiries, and March is the annual provincial reporting month for that particular function. We're doing an in-depth review of the corporate website and AODA compliance cleanup. Planning notices were drafted and circulated with regard to canceling the March 30th meeting. There's report drafting going on for upcoming meetings, both in the Planning Review Committee as well as council, and recruitment activities. In terms of telephone meetings, there are conference call meetings on a daily basis, whether that be with the daily management check-ins, elected officials, Western Wardens groups, and the combined ECG groups. And I just wanted to commend staff for all the additional work that they're looking after and just the cooperation from staff and council throughout this whole situation.
Thank you, Laurie. Anybody have questions for Laurie?
This is Rhonda. I don't have a question, but just a comment. Going back to the C.E.M.C. and talking about the Mennonite and the Amish communities, Perth East has reached out to all of them. We're trying to get letters to their bishops, to their churches and everything else wherever we can. So maybe Todd should talk to somebody, either Wes or Teresa, before they go out and, and take more letters to them, just to know who we've covered and who we haven't.
Thank you, Counselor Eggers. I do believe he's in contact, he works with your clerk's office staff on that, but I will mention that to him again this morning to make sure he connects with them. We don't want them getting, you know, more communication than they need on the same topic, so we'll make sure that's coordinated.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. What I do need is a motion to accept all the verbal reports. Move by.
Bob Welhelm.
Second by you, McDermott? Anybody against that motion? Hearing none, that's approved. Okay, we are moving, council reports. Anybody have anything they wanna bring up?
I don't know if you want me to bring my new business here or a new business. This is Rhonda.
No, we can do it other, other business if you want.
Okay.
Bylaws, we don't have anything? Notices of motion, do I have anything there? Have been aware, made aware, other business, Rhonda, you're up.
Okay, I just wanna ask that we can see the bylaws again that we're voting on in council. At the last meeting, we had three of them, and yes, we moved them, there might have been reports on them, but I would like to see the actual bylaws as well. So I would ask that staff bring them back. I don't know if you want a motion on that or just direction from all of council, but I think council's not doing its due diligence by not seeing them. We're approving of them, and also, if I wanna go back in my minutes and look at them, they're not there. So I'd like the bylaws to be back in and part of our agenda once again.
That's fine. We don't need a motion for that, just staff direction. We'll bring those back into the April 16th meeting.
Right, and through the Warden, what I'll do is when we develop the agenda package, I'll ensure that the actual bylaws included with the staff report so that you can see what you're actually, what the document actually looks like.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else have anything under new business? Or other business? Any announcements? Closed session, we have none. We have a confirmatory bylaw there?
Yes, it's a standard.
It's just the standard confirmatory bylaw, I just don't actually have it in front of me, but I need a motion and a secondary to do the confirmatory bylaw. Do I have a mover? Was that Todd and Doug? Is that what, Todd? Doug Yate or Doug Kellum?
Doug Kellum.
Thank you. Anyone against that? That is approved. So all we need to do now is adjourn, and I need a motion to, first before we adjourn, I wanna thank everyone for participating, and thankfully, we're getting the bugs out of the system here, and we will move on to the 16th, and hopefully, we'll have everything even smoother. Anyway, motion to adjourn.
Bob Welhelm.
Seconder. Okay.
Anybody against that? Approved. Thank you. This motion, this thing is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, bye.
Thank you.